Okay, please, gentlemen, welcome to our town board meeting on a Monday night. We welcome everyone for attending. I want to call the meeting to order. Please, everyone, rise with the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be by Pastor Shawn Smith from Living Spirit Ministries. Will you pray with me?
Almighty God, we stand in awe of you today as your grace and your mercy consumes us. Father God, let your love be the thing that flows from the inside out and covers us in this great city, Father God. Let us be known by this love and let us walk in this love. Father God, we also ask that you cover us. Cover us in this meeting, cover us in our comings and our goings with your wisdom, with your peace, and, Father God, in your discernment, Father God. As you continue to carry us in our walk, strengthen us, equip and empower and encourage us, and, Father, we know that we have no right, no expectation to ask of anything of you, but, Father God, because of that grace and a mercy that consumes us, Father God, that love that moves us, Father God, we are strengthened and we are emboldened. Now, let us pray for one another that we might be uplifted today. Bless the proceedings, Father God, and let it be in accordance with your will. To your name and your name alone be all the glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
Amen. At this time, face our nation's colors. And Kinley Milligan will come forward to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in your visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Shawn Smith, colleague of mine, and co-pretend Dr. McCray at Fayetteville Technical Community College, along with Brittany Milligan, mother of Kinley Milligan, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A little bit about her, she's a fourth grade, she's in the fourth grade of Bray's Creek Elementary School. She's competitive cheerleader in the level three and four teams at Omega Cheer All-Stars, a member of the Battle of Hooks Competitive Team, and a member of the Extreme Science Club at her school. That's quite an accomplishment for this young fourth grader, so how about a round of applause? All right. Board, is there approval of agenda additions or deletions?
Motion to approve, agreement.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
We have Bell Flowers, who we're going to approve item F from the consent agenda and move it to new business item A.
Removing item F from the consent agenda to new business item A. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next part of the agenda is our public comments. Here's what we're going to do. There are a lot of folks in this room tonight, and a lot of folks are going to have a lot to say, and I hope that you do. We're going to limit the public comments for those that are speaking on behalf of the police department salary pay study to 30 minutes. So all of you can either fill up the whole 30 minutes individually, one or two can speak for the entire group for 30 minutes, however how you like, but 30 minutes would be the limit on all of the public comments regarding just the police department pay study. After that, I've got a long list of folks that want to sign, they signed up for public comments. They will get three minutes each off this list. See what time it got here. I have 7:08. I want to open it up for public comments. If you want to come to speak on behalf of the police department pay study.
Excuse me, Mayor Bell Flowers, that list is inclusive of the people that signed up to speak about the pay study.
Okay, so only, so only these people are going to speak?
Correct.
Okay. Then we'll start off with Officer Tyler Cannon.
Good evening. Today I stand before you to shed light on a critical matter that affects the backbone of our society, our law enforcement officers. These dedicated men and women entrusted with the town's safety deserve more than just admiration. We deserve better favor. I've been a police officer for eight years, over six of which have been with the Hope Mills Police Department. Prior to becoming a police officer, I obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of North Carolina at Pembroke. Throughout my eight years of law enforcement experience, I've obtained numerous certifications through various training opportunities. With my degree, years of experience, and various training certifications, my salary is approximately $45,000 per year. A brand-new police officer with zero experience has surrounding agencies that are making thousands of dollars more than I am. None of us came into this job expecting to get rich, but we also do not plan to be in the financial situation that a lot of us are currently in. With the rising cost of everyday living, our salaries are barely enough to pay our bills. I live in a single-income household right now, while my wife is a full-time student at Dental Housing School. After taxes and my daughter's insurance is removed from my paycheck, I'm left with approximately $900 every two weeks to pay all my bills. I challenge each person in this room to limit yourself to $1,800 each month to pay all your bills and everyday activities and see how pressured you are. Each person at Hope Mills PD could even go to federal police department, or Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and make $10,000 to $15,000 more each year, but none of us want to. Every officer in this room is here tonight because we enjoy where we work, who we work with, and who we work for. If these officers didn't care about this town, they would not be here, and they would already be working for other agencies. These men and women behind me are some of the most dedicated, hard-working officers that anyone could ask for, but if they're not properly paid, they would be gone. In the previous meeting, Chief mentioned that there are only 28 officers who are currently able to work right now. If this pay raise does not get approved, that number will drastically drop. If enough people leave, the citizens of Hope Mills will not have enough officers to provide the proper professional services that they have been accustomed to. Without a properly-staffed police department, citizens can expect the later response times to lack of investigative services and increased safety risk for the citizens as well as the officers on each shift. This is a critical time because law enforcement is already experiencing a drop when it comes to people entering this profession. Add forepay to that, and the number of applicants for Hope Mills PD will be slim to none. I've spoken to many experienced officers from other agencies who would love to come and work at Hope Mills if our pay was increased. These officers see the work environment that we have at Hope Mills, and they can see this police department has a bright future. In conclusion, the call for better pay for our law enforcement officers is a call for justice. It's a recognition of their tireless service, their continual commitment to improvement, and the sacrifices they make to safeguard our town. Like Chief said to me last week, we don't properly pay our people, someone else will.
Thank you, Officer Tyler Cannon. Next, we have Detective Tony Mendez.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Tony Mendez. I'm a detective with the Hope Mills Police Department. I started my career here when I was 20 years old. I started as a patrol officer with the town like most new recruits. I was then selected to serve on the community policing unit, which I served on for many years. After that, I was selected to be a detective where I currently serve. In my second capacity at the department, I serve as a task force officer with the United States Department of Homeland Security. I have a degree in criminal justice, advanced law enforcement certificate, and I've also completed over 100 specialized law enforcement courses. I also serve as a liaison for the Law Enforcement Support Services 1033 program, where I have acquired over $1 million in equipment for the town. Among many accommodations, I was awarded a Medal of Valor by the Town of Hope Mills for my actions during Hurricane Matthew in 2016. During my time serving the community policing unit, I really started to grasp what it meant to serve the community. I began to understand what a good relationship with the community was like and what the term "community policing" really meant. Since then, I feel I've built great relationships with a large portion of the citizens of Hope Mills that I consider my friends. If you ask those same people about me, they will tell you that I have always had the best interest of this community in my heart and that my integrity is of the utmost. They will tell you that I will listen to what they have to say, no matter how small the complaint or the information they want to pass along. They will tell you that I will not let you go without food if you're hungry or without a coat if you're freezing cold. They will tell you that I always treat you with dignity and respect. The joke around the PD is that Mendez knows everyone. Well, that's because of my role as a community police officer, and let me stress this apart. It is because of my time at this department that I feel invested with the people in the community because of the time I have spent working in this community. If you want officers to have those type of bonds with the community, then you have to retain those officers. Retention can only be accomplished with competitive pay and a step plan that provides incentive for officers with years of experience to stay. For years, I participated in recruiting for the department and sat on hiring boards. When speaking with potential applicants, the bottom line was always pay. You can cash benefits, time off, in front of potential applicants as much as you want, and it doesn't change the fact that pay is a top item on mostly everyone's list. Time off and benefits do not pay the rent. Currently, I am a prime example of what a new recruit has to look forward to here in Hope Mills. With almost 17 years of experience at this police department and all of my qualifications, I currently make less than a brand-new sheriff's deputy with no experience at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. I think this says everything. During my own research throughout the past 10 years, I spoke to many high-ranking officials at many departments throughout the state, Durham and Rocky Mountain, to name a few. Everyone told me that at the end of the day, the only thing that corrected compression of salaries and retention of officers was a pay step plan being implemented and competitive wages. Benefits were never the answer. For instance, in April of this year, one of these agencies implemented a starting salary of $60,000 a year for officers with a career ladder for pay, which made them competitive to the surrounding agencies. That agency went from being 57 officers short to just 17 since last April. Competitive pay was the answer in this case. Chief Dolinger is a highly decorated law enforcement leader with decades of experience in dealing with the same issues that currently face us. He provided this board with a realistic solution, a solution that I feel complements the fine law enforcement officers that are behind me and will ensure that this department succeeds. What is currently happening to the Hope Mills Police Department is unacceptable. We are losing officers at an alarming rate, and this jeopardizes the safety of citizens at Hope Mills, especially considering the current and projected growth of this town. We have to acknowledge and accept the fact that we are a growing community. Commissioner Marley, Commissioner Scaulow, Mayor Co-pretend McCray, Mayor Bell Flowers, Commissioner Craver, and Commissioner Legg. I am dedicated to this town. With all I've said, my job has always been to safeguard this community, and I stand here before you to do just that. I am the longest-serving active law enforcement officer for the Hope Mills Police Department. As a 17-year veteran of this department, I implore you to take this issue seriously and take action. Take action now because these officers have been waiting years. We got to this point because of inaction. It's time to act. The team behind me, the town's public safety infrastructure, and, most importantly, the safety of the citizens and visitors to Hope Mills lie in the balance. I am confident that this will be the finishing touch in making the Hope Mills Police Department the number-one place to work. I have no doubt that you will have the overwhelming majority of citizen support behind you in your decision.
Thank you, Detective Tony Mendez. Next is Sergeant Lewis. Make sure I get the name right now. Is it Munox?
Yes.
Get it flush.
I want to start by putting a few things into perspective and adding some clarifications to some of the misconceptions about this issue. What it is the police department doing is we're asking for help. We need help getting more officers and maintaining officers by making our department competitive with other departments. We're not entitled to this pay raise, which many people have said we need it to attract qualified officers and keep the ones we have before another agency snatches them up. This is not throwing money at the problem, it's investing in this town's safety and the safety of other officers. As this town continues to grow, we need to ensure we are investing in safety by ensuring we have enough officers to keep up with increasing demands of this town. Law enforcement has gone through a lot in the past several years, you know, a lot of different perspectives, because nobody wants to do the job anymore. For what? To get spit on, harassed, injured, potentially killed, ridiculed, but we still do it. And we do it to protect the citizens of this town regardless. Recruitment and retention have gone down everywhere, and people have learned real quick that police presence is the number-one deterrent and prevention. First thing people say is, "Where are the cops? Cops never around." Well, in Hope Mills, I can tell you, they're leading for better pay in the police departments, and there's not enough left for us to be there. And speaking for those of us who are still here, I will tell you this, we're doing the best we can. That's all we can do. This pay issue is nothing new. It's been something that's been going on in this town for years, but with other agencies' new and improved recruitment strategies, it's worse now. An experienced officer with several years of experience can leave this department right now and pretty much goes to any agency, regardless of how big or small, because even smaller agencies have called onto this, and make over $10,000 more a year. We can't recruit highly qualified officers and experienced officers because coming to this agency would be a severe pay cut to them. Even worse, inexperienced officers see no senses or pay benefits to give us at the time of day. And for those who choose to come here, after a few years, they soon realize that the lack of pay progression shows them being valued as much as an experienced as an inexperienced officer. Yeah, the pay gets bumped up, but it puts seasoned officers close to the pay of new officers, and that's what we have going on now. Agencies everywhere have realized the competitive nature of officers and the value of the police presence, and they pay significantly huge bonuses and incentives. Why? Because they value the safety of their citizens and the officers. The situation has put the town in a bad situation. Officers are tired, they're worn, working many days, many hours straight, and it's created the safety for our officers, leaving officers to handle dangerous situations alone they normally would never have. Pretty soon, more officers are going to realize what they're worth and see that other agencies value more than this town does. Ask you guys this question. What do you want the people of this town to know for you? What do you want your legacy to say about you and your positions? We are potentially in a situation that could leave our town vulnerable. Lack of officers leads to more crime. It is a gamble, and are you guys willing to take it? Is this board one to be known for leaving our officers, I mean, leaving our town vulnerable? Are our officers worth sacrificing? Are the citizens not worth it? And if one of us pays the ultimate sacrifice because of short staffing and we're not being able to get the officers because we asked for help, then I ask you this, what would be the words that you'd say to my family or even their family if we have to pay the sacrifice because we don't want to pay our officers? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Lewis. Next, we have Sergeant David Hampton.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant David Hampton, one of the four patrol sergeants that work here in Town of Hope Mills. My biggest concern here is, well, I have four things. The first one is the quality of applicants. As we have to compete with other agencies who are paying them, our applicant pool is not as good as it could be with others. We have seen over the last 24 months where we have had about 60% of our applicants not stay, and we've lost them either because of pay or because we could not get the quality of applicant we need to compete for. Whereas, we have issues here where the solutions give us that competitive edge, at least parity with the other two main agencies in this area. For instance, the Hope Mills Police Department, the individual officer is not paying to other health insurance companies. That's not true at Hope Mills. That's not true at the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. Even by bringing us to the baseline parity with the steps and the incentives that the chief has recommended, while we will be paying, paying less on paper than the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office at starting pay, the fact that we don't pay for the individual officer's health insurance on a monthly basis brings us parity and makes us competitive. It's a huge thing when we're trying to recruit experienced lateral transfer officers. It's also important when we are trying to get new recruits. With that, the manning issues that we are now in, and we have been getting into, are creating an environment that's unsafe for our officers, which means that we have family members that are imploring our officers to leave for their agency. Yes, because they get paid better, which means they can take care of their family better, but also because of the risks that are being taken. Over the last 12 months, I have seen that my officers and I have an increasingly number of interactions with the public, dangerous interactions with the public, where we go in alone, where there is no second officer available because of the call volume that we're receiving versus the number of available officers. My patrol alone has arrested more than 25 people in the last 12 months, single-handedly, with no backup officer there to help them. This is dangerous. It's dangerous, and our families know we're doing it, and they're saying to us, "This is not how I want this to go." So we're going to get it from both sides of us, both fiscally and from our family's perspective of safety. The third thing, and the final thing I want to talk about, is very simply this. I came here from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office three and a half years ago as a patrol officer, and in that time, as a sergeant, as one of the four sergeants that run patrols for this entire town, if I left and went back to the sheriff's office tomorrow, I would get a significant pay raise as a deputy one, the lowest-level deputy there is at the sheriff's office. If we can't get that fixed, we will lose to them over and over and over again, and the impact will be on the town.
Thank you, Sergeant David Hampton. Next, we have Sergeant Ashley. I don't want to mess this name up, so Ashley, tell me how to pronounce the last one. Rogue leader.
I've been a sworn law enforcement officer since 2018. I've served with the Hope Mills Police Department since January of 2020. Prior to January 2020, I was a Cumberland County Deputy for Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. I'm engaged, I have three kids, and as you can see, I have one on the way. I currently serve in the detective division as a sergeant. Prior to this, I was a patrol sergeant on the road. I hold the title of Field Training Officer, Chemical Analyst, National Charge Drug Driver, Radar Operator. I have my CIT certificate, Crisis Intervention Training. I'm certified in standard DAS, field scrutiny testing, and multiple other things. I am a probationary general instructor for the state of North Carolina, and I've been in multiple supervisory classes. With all these in mind, I have over 1,000 hours of training and am eligible for my intermediate law enforcement certificate through the state of North Carolina. Obviously, we are here today to speak on pay, and I, as a sergeant with five years of law enforcement experience, with multiple certificates and supervision titles that I hold, can tell you today that if I was not engaged living in a dual-income household, I would not even be able to provide a roof over my children's sets. I do not say that to victimize myself or the others that you will hear from today, but it's just the roachery. In July of this year, I was contacted by the Chief of Police for the University of Pembroke and was offered a supervisory role starting at $74,000 a year. That's over $20,000 a year increase in my salary with the same benefits along with free college. Chief does not even know about this because I immediately turned his offer down. I believe in the chief and his vision, the officers, detectives, supervisors, everyone in between, and everybody behind me is my family. I know who I work with, I trust all of them with my life, and I believe the chief will get us a pay increase or exhaust every avenue trying to. I'm not the only person in this department that's been approached by other agencies, as you will hear. I was also offered a job at the Department of Police, not as a supervisor, but with a $10,000 sign-on bonus as well as $10,000 salary increase. Just to remind you, none of these agencies have ever worked with me day in, day out, but approached me for a job opportunity. The sad reality of this is, without this pay increase, I will have to look for other job opportunities because five years of living paycheck to paycheck on my own personal bills is not a goal. While I was on the road as a sergeant, I, as well as other officers, were working seven days straight. Let me explain. That's seven days of 12-hour shifts in high-stress situations. That's 84 hours and maybe even more, depending on how the shift goes at seven days. A normal person with a normal career works 40 hours in five days. That's over double the hours and two extra days to barely make ends meet when it comes to pay bills, let alone not getting any time with your significant other or children. Then, when you are home, you're sleeping. I love my job, and I will not trade for the world, but I do understand that most of us sitting in this room do not become law enforcement officers for the money. But when you dedicate your life to this field, and when I say dedicate, anybody in this room, sitting behind me with experience, current or former, can tell you, your life is dedicated to this career and the people you serve. With this being said, just to worry about the bill, if the bills are going to get paid next month and wake up the next morning, go to work, and do it all over again without complaints is a reality for most, if not everybody in this room. I know what my salary is, and I also know what my salary was as a patrol officer, and I honestly can tell you that I have no idea how specific officers who are single, water lift, rent, electric, Wi-Fi, you name it. I appreciate everybody's attention. I hope this puts our pay issue in perspective, and I hope the bill will be for our officers and not against them. I also want to thank the chief for the hard work he has put into this, all the hours, blood, sweat, and tears, and I know I speak for all of us when I say that we appreciate
Thank you, Sergeant Ashley Rogue Leader. Before I go into other individuals who have signed up for public comments, is there one other police officer that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Give you the opportunity, is there one other police officer or detective that would like to speak? Okay. See you done. I'll go into the public sign-up sheet. I'll call out your name. When you come to the mic, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name, your address, and the first person is Bridget Thompson.
Hi, guys. I'm a homeowner in Hope Mills, I've been here since 1997, and I have written to the commissioners because this is a big concern of mine. When I very first moved here, I'm going to go on a totally different direction, write anything down, but I know Mendez. So he said, "Everybody knows Mendez." And he's a really great guy. We all need shirts that say, "Got Mendez." Thank you very much for your... Chief has done some really good things. He gives money from other places. He's not coming to the town for money, you know? He's applying for grants, he's doing all this stuff. These guys deserve this. My son is the district manager for Zaxby's. He started cooking chicken over here. He makes $50,000 more a year than our police officers. Have y'all been looking at the news, all the people that have been arrested for drugs? We all know somebody who is overdosed in the last couple of years. Everybody in this room knows somebody that's overdosed. Our police are out here working for us. They deserve this. Please raise my taxes so they get a raise. I would much rather pay higher taxes for the police than I would a damn ball field. I don't care about that. What I care about is the community collection that we used to have. Commissioner Legg was in charge of the Hope Mills Peace Association when my children played, and that tells you how old they are, right? Right, Commissioner? Okay? So I've been here a really long time. This is not the same town that it was when I bought my home. We need to go back to where we were. We knew the police. Detective Harden chasing down a bad guy and dropping dead. Like, I remember all these police. We knew each other. We called them because we trusted them. Today, with all the things with Floyd and with the pandemic, this is not just a Hope Mills situation. This is a national problem. People don't want to be the police. We need a police, a community that trusts the police, like we used to have, that we can call and say, "Hey, man..." can call and say, hey, man, somebody's trying to get into the house next door, not closing our eyes, turning our backs, and not caring. We need to have the community policing that we had back then, you know? It's only been 20 years. We can get back there. We are not retaining officers at a rate that we should be. I mean, you can't pay your rent, you know? That's crazy to me. People working in a fast-food restaurant are doing better than our detectives. Please raise my taxes, please. I'm happy to pay. I really am. And I encourage people to vote. I'm one of the people that comes out and votes. And I've encouraged so many people to come and vote, and I have had people come and vote, you know? Go pick people up, bring them to Hope Mills to vote, and have them up on issues. This is so important for our community. The first thing that we should be concerned about is the safety of our public. That's what we don't care about paying for. Believe me, I spoke to so many people, I really wish I could have brought it in tonight. Raise my taxes, please give the police a raise. They deserve it, they need it.
Ma'am, can you come back and just state your name and your address for the record?
Ah, sorry. Bridget Thompson, 58, Ruffus Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28340.
Thank you, Bridget. Next, we have Jacob Whitmell.
I'm trying to get it right. I don't know. Jacob Whitmell, 4217 Kill Trap. I used to be an employee for the town as a officer. I worked from March 2011 to March 25th. The biggest reason why I left was pay. And that was even before this inflation. So how these guys are handling inflation on their salary, I have no idea. There's two easy ways to fix the retention problem. One, long-term pay. You need long-term pay. Two, comp timing. Get rid of comp timing. We have to have it. Unless it's changed, every 28 days, we have to turn in 116 hours. On average, I would turn in 200. That comp time, I've been working for three, 30 hours on average. It's not fair. That needs to go away. Long-term pay. 10 years. I talked to a teacher one time who had 10 years. She made more than I did. Everybody talks about teachers' pay. We need to raise these guys' pay. They like her, I'll pay them. If they need me, I'll pay them. Because these guys have been in the trenches for a while. They're my brothers and sisters, just like the guys I deployed with. I'll go to bat for these guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob Whitmell. I got it right. Next, Bambi Bellflowers.
Good evening. I'm Bambi Bellflowers and live at 3306 Harrisburg Drive. I'm not standing here tonight as a citizen. I'm standing here as a human resources professional. I have been following this diligently. Pay is obviously one of the things that we HR professionals hold near and dear to our hearts, and also causes numerous migraine headaches. I will tell you that I do have public service experience as the assistant director of HR for the city of Fayetteville, so I work very closely with the police department and every other department in the city of Fayetteville. I strongly agree that the pay plan needs to be looked at very carefully. You currently are paying an external company $18,000 to run a salary survey for the entire town. What I'm about to say is not going to be popular, and I may not make it out of the room alive, but what I would strongly ask the PD to do is to wait for the results of this survey. It will be out in a couple of months. Every employee of this town, I'm sure, suffers from salary compression because this has been an ongoing issue in the town for years. It's not going to get fixed overnight. It didn't happen this way overnight, and it's not going to get fixed this way. If you only take one department, how is that going to be perceived by all the others? It's going to be perceived very badly, and our police officers already have a hard enough life as it is without their coworkers, because that's what all the town employees are, their family, their coworkers. They're not going to have a very good taste in their mouths at the end of the day. They're going to be resentful because they got preferential treatment when it comes to pay. I am with Commissioner Craver when she said last week I'd pay everybody $100,000 a year if I could. But the reality is, from my experience, I will tell you, this didn't happen overnight, it's not going to get fixed overnight. You can't ask the town manager and the finance director to come up with scenarios in three days to fix a problem that has been ongoing for at least 10 years, at least, from what I've heard. I'll continue to watch this carefully. If anyone wants to talk to me about it and get some advice from me, I have gone through implementing a step plan for the police department. I was in on it with the Fayetteville PD. I had numerous conversations with Fayetteville PD late into the night, but we got it fixed. And equity pay is another thing that really needs to be discussed. You can't throw $20,000 at something. It's going to have to be gradual. And yes, it will probably take tax increase, and I'm willing to pay it too. Thank you.
Next is Debbie Jones.
Hi, I'm Debbie Jones. I live at 5240 Spreading Branch Road, Hope Mills, North Carolina. I'm a homeowner. I'm a business owner, and I'm also the founder and president of the Hope Mills Police Foundation. The thing I want to talk about is not just their pay, but we need more officers. Last Sunday on 12:10, I received a subpoena, okay? And on 12:10, I was leaving to go to Beech Mountain for a week. I had to appear in court on 12:11, one-day notice. I wasn't canceling my trip. So in all honesty, what happens when you don't appear in court when you get a subpoena? They can issue a warrant for your arrest. So for all I know, I just came back. There might be a warrant out there somewhere. They might have a warrant for me, I don't know, okay? But the point of the matter is, this was issued on November 17th. It didn't come to my house till December 10th. So that tells me we don't have enough of police officers to be getting people their subpoenas like they're supposed to. I mean, what's going on? We have sometimes just two officers on the road. So you've got one issuing subpoenas, but then there's an emergency. You have to stop the subpoenas and go to the emergency. Now, if I dial 911, I want someone to come to my home, and I know you all do, and everybody else sitting out here does also. But we need more police officers, and in order to get more police officers, we have to pay. And a lot of you are prior military. You understand the step pay. Department of Defense, that's how they pay. My husband works for Department of Defense, and it has worked for years and years and years and years. There's no reason why women work right here in Hope Mills. And Chief is, he does a fantastic job. I've owned a business since 96 here in Hope Mills. I've seen from Chief Hodges all the way up to Chief Dolinger. So this man, he is all about his personnel. And in order to keep personnel, you have to be about your personnel. He is doing everything he can to keep these men and women here, to keep our town safe. And being a business owner, like I said, I own a business down in the Carleese Shopping Center. A lot of you know where I'm at. There's an alleyway that goes behind the flower shop. I always used to have police officers sitting back there in the alleyway doing paperwork. I never had to be afraid to open the back door of the flower shop. There was always people. Not no more. Not no more. So please consider this and raise my taxes also, because if you figure it out, it's not going to raise very much. Thank you. I appreciate you all so much.
Okay, this concludes public comments. We'll now go into official comments, and I will start with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor Bellflower. I think we all feel the same pain, and I understand what it's like, Chief, and the police officers. I know what it's like to have to try to buy milk for your kids and hairspray for your wife, and I have to deal with those officers. We're working hard toward it. I want you to know that I think that you need a pay increase. I'm not sure what it's going to be, if it happens that way, but I think that you deserve that, you earn that, and I think we expect that of you. Like Ms. Jones said, when she calls 911, she wants somebody there. A lot of that went away when we went to the 911 system. I remember we used to just call straight to the PD. We can't do that anymore. So good luck on your efforts to get this pay plan in effect, and I'm sure that something's going to happen. We may not know what yet, but I feel that something's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Commissioner Skorola.
Pressure I wasn't expecting. It's so serious. Thank everyone for coming out and speaking your voice, because that's very important. You know, I hear what everyone's saying. I, you know, the struggle is real, you know? Those who know me, I did 20 years in the military, and then as soon as I retired, I jumped into doing this job. So we never really had any other job, you know? So I had the military pay scales, and I was always, you know, had that to stand by. One thing that Debbie talked about, it came to mind as I was writing some notes down, we talked about military pay. One thing that people don't realize, with the federal government, if the budget doesn't pass, you don't get paid. And that's happening...
It'll come later.
Yeah, it'll eventually come, but, you know, it's scary when you don't get the paycheck and you're overseas and you're really fighting for the country, and you're like, oh, can't pay my mortgage back home. But I totally understand regardless. You know, I understand that the struggle is real, especially if you're a new officer and you have to figure out how you're going to pay your rent, especially if you have a family. It's the same thing with soldiers, you know, brand-new privates, have marriages, have kids, and they all, you know, they're collecting government benefits because they can't afford to, you know, they need some kind of assistance because they can't make the pay with the pay they have. We're listening. We are truly listening. It's just a matter of how we're going to try to do this. So, you know, just give us, give us a chance to try to figure out this, because it's like they were saying, it didn't happen overnight. I am, you know, I am not the grand kuba of finance, so I, we're looking for guidance, and we're going to try to figure this out, so.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Skorola. Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. As the rest of the commissioners said, and I'll say it again, Chief, I know that, you know, this ain't the best that you're looking for, you and your staff, but, you know, rest assured, we know the problem. We've identified the problem. Rest assured, our town manager is working diligently to get us an answer that this board can come together on, and as soon as he does, you know, I'm sure this board will be willing to act on it. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. They were well-received. We have a closed session coming up, and we have a item on the agenda to hear from our manager tonight, I believe, on this subject. So just note that we've identified the problem, we are working on it, and like Ms. Bellflower said, this problem didn't happen overnight. We're not going to get out of it overnight. But, you know, I want every one of y'all to stay here in this town, and towards Mendez that. I just want to do everybody, I know Mendez, he's a good guy. So he's been here a long time, and I want every officer in this room to be able to stand up there and say they've been here for 17 years and longer. So just bear with us, and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Craver.
I too appreciate all of you coming, and I admire you so much for standing up and fighting for what you believe in. We all hear you up here. Not one officer or not for you getting a raise. Just bear with us, and we will work something out for you. I promise you that. And thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Porter-Tan, Dr. McBray.
I would just like to, this is our first official meeting since I was swearing in, so I would like to thank the citizens of Hope Mills for giving us this opportunity to serve another term. I would like to thank the prison and past elected officials that attended on, two weeks ago when we were sworn in. And I would, last but not least, I would like to thank the staff, which includes many of you that we work alongside every day to serve the citizens of Hope Mills. I think that I said everything that I wanted to say at our special meeting on last Tuesday. I don't think I have anything else to add, but I think you all know how I feel. So thank you again for all that you do, and we are diligently working on the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porter-Tan, Dr. McBray. So here we are, this board's hearing. Here's what we know, is that if you didn't care about our town, you wouldn't be sitting here tonight. I want to say that's true, because I believe it to be true. This pay study that came up back in October from your chief started the conversation. Actually, it started way before October, because he had this issue months ago when he first came in as police chief of our town. So he identified this as early as then when he came in. It has taken up until now to be heard. So each of you in this room that spoke and that are sitting there with your family members tonight, you are the voice, not only for your department, you're the voice for every department in this town. So our challenge as a board is what I call a three-legged stool, one old country boy. One of those legs is what we do has to be equitable. The other leg, we have to be fair. And the third leg, we have to be consistent, because the worst thing we can do is implement something that isn't one of these three legs. What we do with one department, we must be consistent with all of our departments, because every one of our departments working concert with each other provides services to the citizens of our great community. We have a heck of a charge. We have a heck of a mission. We have a heck of a challenge. We are asking to give us the time to make informed decisions. Give us the time to look at the facts. Give us the time to do information gathering, and that's what we're doing. We're moving at a very fast rate on an issue, like my wife said earlier, didn't happen overnight. We're not going to fix it overnight, but we're going to get after it, and we're going to do that smartly. Now, you've taken the time to come here tonight. We've heard two... We've heard two meetings. Now, we know what we have to do. We're going into closed session. For Paul to be there a while. Then we're going to come out. Then we're going to hear a presentation from our town manager. It's on the agenda. I ask you to stay and wait. I don't know how long we'll be in closed session. We'll be back out as soon as we can. Thank you. And thank all of you for coming. Mayor Proton, Dr. McCray.
Mayor Bellflowers, I am calling, making a motion to move to closed session pursuant to NCGS 1433-1811, 8325 privilege and NCGS 1433-1811, 86 personnel.
Our board has a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we return back to open session.
I'd like to make the motion to move to seal the minutes of a closed session until such time as the release of the impeachment will no longer frustrate the purpose of a closed session and further no actual saving.
No motion, go ahead and say it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is the presentation and that will be presented by interim town manager, Jackson McLaughlin.
All right. And so, as you are aware, staff has met extensively over the past two weeks with elected officials, the Town Hall Mills Police Chief, our Finance Director, our Human Resources Director, as well as representatives from Piedmont Triad Regional Council, who is currently conducting our pay study. At the recent pay study work session, the board directed me to come back tonight with three possible options tied to salary increases for the police department. In light of a current pay study for all employees being conducted, the goal was to explore the possibility of finding a way to provide the police department with increases now as they are fighting high rates of vacancies. With that said, after meeting extensively with the pay study company, I do not feel that the Town of Hope Mills is ready to provide those recommendations to the board tonight. While this is something that we need to do, while this is something that we're going to do, this is something that we have to do properly. I do not feel that this is something that can be accomplished in a short period of time. And while we aggressively meeting to determine the best way to address direct challenges with PD, we need to make sure this is done with precision. We are in the middle of the pay study and the decisions we make now with respect to our police department must also be consistent with recommendations at the conclusion of the pay study that will apply to the rest of our staff to include fire and maintenance. So, at this time, we're not ready to provide you with options on the increase in salaries in the police department. We will continue to aggressively meet with the company conducting the pay study and will provide you with updates as we progress forward. Now, as manager, I want to speak directly to our police officer. I'm asking you to put your trust in me that I do have your best interests at hand. I will continue to fight for you. I will continue to aggressively push this forward. But I have to be a leader that makes the tough decision just to tell you that at the present time, on December 18th, I do not think we're quite ready. Does not mean we're going to belabor this for a significant amount of time. I just do want to make sure if we're going to pull this trigger, we're going to pull it correctly and we're going to give you just due that you deserve. I'd like to turn it up to the board for any other further comments.
While we cannot, we will implement, we will implement some things and suggestions that they are providing us with the pay study. We're just not ready to do it right now. But what we can do right now is I would like to make the motion to do a 2.5 COLA increase for all employees.
Second. Our board has a motion. Our board has a second. That we will increase the COLA for all of the town employees to 2.5% effective January. Effective 1 January. That is the motion. That is the second. Any discussion? This is the time. Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. We move on to the next item, consent agenda. We moved item F to new business. So, the board like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. F present. Have a motion, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. The end of the consent agenda, we go to old business or none. We go to new business and that is item F and it goes back to interim town manager, Jackson McLaughlin.
All right. Thanks, Mr. McLaughlin. Town staff contacted the North Carolina League of Municipalities to directly engage them on a program that offers, provides technical assistance and guidance on grant program. Pay the Municipal Accounting Services Cybersecurity and Technical Assistance Program. The State Budget Act of 2021 provided the League of Municipalities grant funds provided to the state north of North Carolina by the U.S. Treasury. Although a large portion of the program is tied to cybersecurity, during staff's inquiry of the program, we found that there's an aspect of the program that provides technical assistance for grants. Identified as Office of State Budget and Management, OSBM-NCLM-66, this award enables the league to provide guidance and technical assistance to municipal government and the administrative funds from the local recovery fund and in the administration of projects funded through the state fiscal recovery fund. As in the seat of the agreement outlined, it is attached to the packet, outlines the service, services tied to grants. The league is prepared to provide up to $30,000 worth of grant services to invest in our pursuit of alternative funding options. That include grants, appropriations, or to fulfill and maximize and leverage our orphanal allocations. There are three possible phases of these grant services with each having a maximum budget available to apply toward associated costs. Phase one, project identification, project prioritization, available funding source identification, eligibility, and our ability to meet requirements. During this phase, an identified consultant will determine the appropriate and optimal paths regarding the project needs and will work to determine the most competitive options. Phase two, preparation and supplemental of the grant applications. This phase covers all the work a consultant will do to prepare an application that meets the criteria and requirements of the identified grant program. This phase eligible for up to $10,000 of the work required by the consultant, which are covered by the league and paid directly to the consultant. Phase three is grant award and management. This phase includes finalizing the grant agreements between grantor and the grantee while identifying and preparing required compliance measures, drafting and updating appropriate policies and procedures and internal controls, and establishing a method to meet the reported requirements. The program requires that all league expenditures be obligated on or before December 31st, 2024, with the deadline for funds to be spent by December 31st, 2026. Staff intends to implement this program through the newly created Economic Development Committee and will work with internal departments to identify list of projects to pursue through this program. All of this is at no cost to the Town of Hope Mills. Staff has already begun, has already been contacted by representative from Wythe Bryan's team, who is a consultant identified in the grant program. I must give kudos to our town clerk, Ashley Wyatt. She was the one that accidentally found this program. We had a conversation and you heard me correctly. It's not the $30,000 is the amount that we'll get. It's $30,000 in consultant fees that are paid by the league for them to find every type of grant imaginable for us to apply to projects. And many times, Don Cisco will tell you, a lot of times when we get FAMCO grants, we have to make sure we budget for the match. They can go after appropriation funds. They can go after endowment funds. They can pretty much go after every type of funding source and they do all the pre-engineering work and everything. And so, this is an amazing opportunity. I appreciate you pulling it from the agenda to give an opportunity. It's found on it. But this is something where we've always aggressively gone after grants, but it's typically Don, Lamarcle, and I writing the grants. We're doing a lot of different things. This is finding the grant, writing the grant, and administering it all at no cost to the town. So, I think it's a game changer. We have a year to identify and allocate funds and we got two years to spend. And they're begging us to spend the money.
That is an excellent report because grant writing is a time-consuming process of research. And you guys got to run a town and you got to run departments. You know, so it's the times that's involved in writing grants, finding grants, making sure you got the right language and your package correctly. And Ashley, hats off to you for finding this opportunity for our town because I think we've got a CIP book that we could send them. They can start with that. Any other comments from the board?
I would like to say thank you to Chancellor and to Ashley. We've been wanting to create writers for years. I mean, I've been sitting up here for 25 years and I remember 25 years ago, we were talking about this and here we are doing it again. But this time, it's us, the girls, the guys.
Any other comments? Next item, Chancellor, you're still up. Your manager's report. We need a most still approved. Oh, yes, we do. Good point.
I would like to make the motion to approve a resolution, R. 202327, to approve a municipal accounting services cybersecurity and technical assistance memorandum agreement.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? No one's approved? Motion carries. Now, we come to the manager's report.
All right. I'll give a brief update on some of the events and projects before I go into the National League of Cities Summit Report. But the community events on the manager's report, we highlighted Coffee with a Cop from our PD. We offered also Pack the Patrol Car and the second House Food Bank food distribution that was held in Southview with members of Omega Saffy. And for the commercial development, Freddy's frozen custard steak burgers. A building permit has been issued, well, not building permit has been issued. They did get the zone approval. I think building permits are, especially departments waiting on structural plans. Discount Tire Shop is under construction. That's actually, both of those projects are at the Mill Building Shopping Center where Fit for Life is. Cobers is coming to the town. They received their building permit. They're located at 3320 South Pete Drive in the Mill Shopping Center. From residential, you have the one off of El Road is under construction. Valiant Phase Three is under construction. Providence Subdivision off of Sand Hill Road has just received their approval of their civil plans. And Preservate Upchurch, they're gearing up for street acceptance. As it relates to the National League of Cities Summit Atlanta 2023, I know at the end of my report, Mayor Proton, Dr. McCray, and Commissioner Skorola may actually speak on their experience as well, but all three of us went to this, this conference. And it's 2023 National League of Cities Summit Conference was held in November 16th to 18th at George World Congress Center at the Omni Hotel in Atlanta. This city summit is considered by many the most comprehensive municipal conference of the year and it assembles local elected officials, municipal leaders, experts, industry leaders together to share expertise and knowledge that ultimately benefit their respective cities and municipalities. What I'm going to present to you now is how we were able to pull some of these experiences and funnel them to real-time projects or initiatives that the town has undertaken. There were breakout sessions held that allowed you to engage industry experts for to identify initiatives tied to federal funding, community, economic development, infrastructure, intergovernmental relations, municipal finance, public safety, and justice reform. There were tools that we were able to go on. The two that were most impactful for me were the Atlanta Beltline and the AG Atlanta Tours. The Atlanta Beltline is considered to be the most comprehensive revitalization effort ever undertaken by the city of Atlanta. It's a 33-mile network of multi-use trails that create a new public ground by offering a pedestrian-friendly environment that promotes walking, jogging, biking, and affordable housing. Many of the benefits of the Beltline are directly tied to workforce housing, transit, green space, trails, and historic preservation. After each section, I'm going to also give you what our goals and objectives are. Staff plans to identify sources of federal and state infrastructure through the program we just approved to explore the possibility of a greenway within the Hope Mills limits that will ultimately connect the Golf Field Greenway to this complex, Hope Mills Lake and Hardest Park. That's what I see when I tour the Beltline. It connects the entire city. So, part of the Hope Mills Southwest Plan, talking about making pedestrian connection between these four complexes of the town. I do think that if you have the trail here connecting to the trail, the greenway at the golf course, connecting to the lake, that would be something very impactful. The AG Atlanta Tour, and I think Mayor Proton will speak on this as well. It was an urban, the tour for an urban agriculture mobile workshop that showcased the cities of Atlanta, City of Atlanta's Urban Agriculture Initiative. The purpose and goal of the program is to create a more equitable and inclusive access to food systems primarily in areas considered to be food deserts. On the tour, participants were taken to the Urban Food Forest in Brown's Mill, which is the country's largest community food forest and edible city park. Participants on the tour were also taken to the Truly Living Well Center for natural urban agriculture, which has programs that provide agriculture training, nutrition, education, and job creation with partnerships with local restaurants who provide training opportunities to the homeless. In terms of our goals and objectives, I would like to create a partnership with Sustainable Sand Hills to develop initiative that could not only support our local farmers, but to cultivate a possible new and meaningful way to approach homelessness through community gardens. Small Cities Program, the conference also consisted of information provided tied to the Small Cities Program, which is open to municipalities from member cities with populations of 50,000 or less. Small cities make up roughly 80% of the National League of Cities membership. Some of the sessions held tied to Small Cities Programs were North Carolina Downtown Development Association, Proven Social and Economic Impacts of Arts, Proven Health Impacts of Arts, Exploring Rural and Suburban Mobility Options, Revitalizing Main Street, which is transforming downtown spaces. The Connection to Us, the town recently met with the Arts Council of the county to engage a new grant called Creative Placement. This new endeavor would be a great opportunity to engage the New Arts and Culture Committee with a goal of exploring a possible location for another mural or sculptures in the proposed roundabouts along Rockfish Road in front of Town Hall. Town Hall with the widening of Rockfish Road and DOT. Staff also intends to attend the North Carolina Main Street Conference, currently set for March 12th, 2024. Another fruitful session was tied to approaches to city innovation, which will help in our current efforts to develop a more robust benefits package for the Town of Hope Mills. General work sessions were also provided tied to the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA. um tied to the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARCA. They actually provided a uh a tracker that allows us to track out other municipalities' allocation of ARCA funds. Um civic engagement, sessions were here provide guidance on how to engage our community through service and volunteer as well as innovative collaborations. Community and economic development, sessions on how to enable adults without degrees to achieve economic mobility. Our connection is information provided in these work sessions will be cultivated through new committees such as the Arts and Culture Committee again, as well as the Economic Development Committee. In terms of resources, um the National League of Cities Federal Advocacy Updates, a bi-weekly newsletter that provides analysis and updates on critical federal issues directly impacting cities and ways to take action through notices of funding opportunities for municipal projects. It's a ready-to-build program that provides guidance on how to utilize funding from four federal programs. The bipartisan infrastructure law and inflation reduction act, the inflation reduction act, uh annual congressional appropriations and others. The N L C also has a federal advocacy team of professionals with experience ranging from grassroots advocacy, energy and environmental, natural resources, transportation, infrastructure services, public safety, crime prevention, information technology, and communications. Um they have a local infrastructure hub called the L I H, which is a national program that connects cities and towns with resources and expertise in the need to access federal infrastructure funding. Um they have a boot camp that they offer uh that starts in February twenty twenty four. Some of the upcoming boot camps are promoting resilient operations for transformative efficiency and cost-saving transportation. It's called the Protect Grant Program. Climate pollution reduction programs where indirectly tied to the emissions reduction grants is sidewalk grants because it's providing alternate modes of transportation of other cars. Safe streets for roads and all uh clean energy tax credits, clean water state revolving funds. So what, and this is the condensed version, my report on this is eight pages in the manager's report. What I'm doing is I want this to serve for all departments to be able to look because these are not just grants tied to those two or three committees. These are grants that police can go after, things of nature. But the key is to fund it all through that agenda I have mentioned just approved. Now turn it over to Mayor Protem, she wants to add.
What our inner town manager just stated was he's very thorough. Um so I'll do a couple of highlights. We did renew our membership with the National League of Cities and we did vote on a couple of pages, a couple of resolutions. Um some of those that I would mention, and I can email you the full copy of some of the resolutions that we voted on, but one of them is um support for outdoor recreational legacy partnership programs and the outdoors acts for all supported integrated planning and new affordability consideration for water um in support of a federal agenda for local economic development, economic mobility, and entrepreneurship, and a resolution urging Congress to enable housing vouchers for homeownership opportunities and local innovation and attainable housing. Uh we are also now a member of small cities, um small cities, cities, towns, and villages, shake N L C's initiatives, grant opportunities, and federal advocacy. I am a voting delegate for the small cities and Commissioners Skrola may raise an alternate delegate. Um other things that we talked about in some of our small city breakout sessions was the municipal workforce issues uh with retaining, hiring, and retaining employees. And they did ask some good questions about how do we engage our community in pursuing innovation? So like just, we did the survey with the baseball team, but surveying our community about um how do they see innovation in the community and even surveying them about how they want us to spend money when it comes to budgeting. So I thought those were some good ideas and I also did the Ag Atlanta Tour with Mr. McLaughlin and what he reminded me of, because he's covered a lot of information. Um we have paints that is right outside of Hope Mills city limits and then there's Turpac Gels has the uh a performance market on Sundays, but what I imagine for our community is a permanent local space like that where people could come get fresh foods inside of the city limits of Hope Mills because we don't have anything like that right now. And I think that would be good for the town. And the tour that I did by myself was um dealing with public art and they have a Martin Luther King uh Junior Drive Innovation Corridor. And the corridor doesn't doesn't just have public art, but it's sponsored by our new Atlanta Board. And it featured pedestrian signal and light and safety improvements. Um they had an estimated three point seven million dollars that was allocated for public art where eighty percent of the funds went towards the selection, design, and development and twenty percent went towards maintenance and conservation. Um but the the corridor, they had pieces of art that, one of them was called Beans Towards Justice, Hope of Moving Forward. They had bike racks and utility box murals. And what I was going to say is I know we don't have the budget that Atlanta has, but what they have done is they have been very strategic in investing in art, which is a uh conversation when it comes to budget season, but what a lot of people don't realize is that art is an economic generator. So when I, I know people talk about baseball fields and things like that, but I try to help bring things. I support things that help bring money into this community to help us with the issues and things that we talked about today tonight. So it is an economic generator, it increases civic participation by eighty-six percent. Um four point seven millions in jobs created by arts and culture. And the list goes on and how it helps mental health, lower risk of depression, risk of dementia, and disabilities. And there was, in July twenty twenty four, there were eighteen communities participating in the Arts for Everyone initiative. So this includes local artists, municipalities, community health leaders who work together to create a large-scale participatory arts project that advances again wellness, health equity, and sustainable change. And Winston-Salem is actually one of those communities that is participating in that. And lastly, we went to a session together dealing with transportation. Um and we got a lot of helpful information when it comes to that. And they asked us to think about some guiding questions, mobility projects in our community. What do we want our, what do we want to see in our community five or ten years from now? What are the major mobility projects in our city? And then they had success stories focused on mobility planning projects and programs and war projects. And again, we had eight pages. I think I probably condensed mine down. But your money was well spent taxpayers. We didn't just go for a vacation.
So I went for, so we all tried to split up and do different workshops. Um the workshops I chose were Public Land as an instrument for inclusive thriving neighborhoods, Oakland Cemetery from Civil War to Civil Rights, and then we were all able to go to the um Telepair Studios. Um so the public land as an instrument for inclusive thriving neighborhoods. So it wasn't what I thought it was. Now granted, we're talking about Atlanta compared to Hope Mills. And basically their way of trying to build these neighborhoods is they were taking these plots of land that were undeveloped in in um they're trying to revitalize parts of their downtown and they were basically building um what would you call them, like Conex houses, temporary housing. And um that way to get to, to, you know, help the homeless population, get people off the, off the streets and they had them sporadically placed all throughout the city and they were still in construction when they drove us through, so um really couldn't see inside the buildings or anything like that. But again, it was a large city, so it's hard to compare that to Hope Mills. Um but it was very interesting, a lot of good information of how they um a lot of good information they were putting out. Uh the Oakland Cemetery, the thing that that got me about that and comparing it to Hope Mills. So they had fourteen million dollars to update their cemeteries. And I'm just like, wow, could we get that for the town, just period? And um the way they were using their cemeteries is also as open green space as parks. So they would have, um so it was more than just the cemetery. They had their own committees um for the cemetery itself and it was, it was huge, it was huge. And to see um the upkeep, I mean, just the construction that they had going on in there. I mean, fourteen million dollars does a lot. But it was really, really great information. Um they're they worked with their planning department is how they had a lot of stuff done. A lot of it came from grants and that's why, one of the most, the big takeaway from that uh the the summit was a lot of the stuff is from grant writing and that was, that was the big thing. Um a lot of the information, so like, when we went in the workshops, I was getting any and all information. Federal funding for G I S, developing equity strategic plan in four steps, responding to homelessness and crisis. I mean, there was a slew of information. Um even the one that, because we're working on, you know, our, our parks, disability park awareness, and talk about the inclusive playgrounds. I was like, great, more information. So it was like a plethora of information and being my first time going to something like that, it was a little overwhelming. But um it, it, it's a great asset for information. And uh some of the committees like, um, you know, because we're part of the small cities, the one of the committees that I applied for was Military Committees Council, Small Cities Council, which I'm the second delegate. Um and then Women in Municipal Government. I was actually selected for Women in Municipal Government. Still waiting to hear back about the other committees, but um it was just a great experience.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray, and Commissioner Skrola. Along with you, Chancellor, an excellent report on the Atlanta trip. And it sounds like that we're, that we're in concert with what we're looking at going forward with one of our challenges and goals in developing that comprehensive strategic plan, but also working in partnership with the grant writing memo that we approved tonight. Commend the board for doing that and for also approving the new economic development committee and the cultural arts committee uh at our organizational meeting. So we're moving forward in the right direction. We truly, truly are. Well, rest of the agenda, we know the town offices will be closed till holidays from December twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh. And our next record board meeting will be on January eighth. This is our first meeting tonight as the newly elected board. But it is our last meeting for twenty twenty three. And with that said, staff comments?
No real comments. Uh I just kind of want to encourage you guys to oh, Don Sisko.
It's an easy one. Just a reminder, we are going to start lowering the lake level beginning of September, January. And you get us going, I'll satisfy the staff.
As long as you put a memo out. Make sure that you put a disseminate a memo out on the sunshine list. I'm sure you will, Don. Thank you, buddy.
I'm looking at everybody at first. But I just
Second week in January, right, Don?
January the second.
Oh, January the sixth, okay.
I just want to, you know, commend the board. Um, you know, you guys have the tough position to sit up there and make some of these tough decisions. And um I know that you guys, your hearts are in the right place. I just want to keep encouraging you guys to continue to push forward to make this town a better place for us all.
Thank you.
I agree with what Chancellor said.
All right, I don't have anything else. Ashley?
Good evening. I don't have any official comments, but I just wanted to issue all happy holidays and a happy new year.
Rhonda?
Oh, no, I don't have any comments. I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. Ashley said. Happy holidays and happy new year.
All right, any other staff on the wall? Anybody else? No? Lisa, Drew, Emily, no? Okay. All right, with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do have a motion to adjourn, but first I want to note Ms. McCray's uh information she gave or go included funding for bus service in Hope Mills. Or can it, or would it, or will it?
Um they kind of gave us ideas of thinking about transportation in a different way. Even partnering, some municipalities partner with like Uber or Lyft to provide citizens transportation. And um just, we kind of going back to what we all talked about when I first got a maybe the big transit system is not what we need. Maybe it's something smaller that we need in Hope Mills. So it just kind of let us think about the way that we view transportation in a different way. It has to be individualized to what fits our community. Um and there was some grunt grant funding that we could apply for too.
Yes, um um to the manager's report, there's uh there's several transportation-related grants. But like I said, with this new relationship we have with the league, we can just literally ask them, go find us a grant for a small van service that will run the local um routes for town of Hope Mills. I do know we're still a little with FAMCO for that cross-town connected with fast. And so if that provides a connected, a connection to the uh the hub in Fayetteville, maybe the smaller version is what we could find a grant funding for to get people more to more locations around Hope Mills, but that's something we're there for.
And one more thing I would like to say, we have already spoken with some of the county commissioners and we spoke with some of our friends from Fayetteville City Council and Spring Lake because transportation in Cumberland County needs to become a regional effort. Um it needs to protect people across the county. It cannot be split like we do it now. It is ineffective for all of our citizens when we look at it as a individualized plan. It must become a regional conversation.
I agree, Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray. And I plan on presenting that issue at the mayor's coalition in February. Because I think all of us, all nine municipalities in Cumberland County should look at this as a regional issue. And I think we're doing the right thing. Rachel X?
Motion to adjourn. Merry Christmas.
Should we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?